Okay. Are we ready to start the meeting? I'm sorry, all this.
Yes, go ahead.
Okay, we'll call this meeting to order. Uh, let's see. So are we at roll call?
Yes, Director Brett Echols.
Here.
Director Arthur Perry.
Here.
Secretary Arlene Schaefer. Vice President Mike Schaefer.
I'm here.
President Robert Uden.
Hi, I'm, I'm, I'm sorry for the delay. Uh, what, are there been any public comments?
No, Mr. President.
Or, and, and, and no hands raised?
No, sir.
Okay. Then we'll, we'll go on down to, um, the item number one, that's study item number one, which is receiving file report regarding Costa Mesa Sanitary District Cyber Security Program. Scott?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mr. President. So in light of last week's recent attacks on the Los Angeles Unified School District, uh, we thought it'd be appropriate to share with the board and the public some of the steps were taken to, uh, and ensure something like that doesn't happen to us. Obviously, when, uh, the second largest school district in the country gets attacked, the White House notices and the, the White House was contacted, FBI was contacted, uh, so it was a significant attack. We, uh, invited our consultants at Acorn to be here, uh, this morning to share with you kind of a, uh, a 30,000 foot overview of our security plan. We don't want to give out too much information because we know people are listening or watching, so we don't want to give anybody ideas, but we feel confident enough that our, our, our consultants can, uh, give you enough information to share with you what we're doing to protect the district's, um, IT information. So, so you can, um, uh, sleep well tonight like, like I do. So, um, on, um, joining us today is, um, uh, Mickey McGuire. And also, um, David, uh, McKissick. And so, um, uh, Mickey is, is the owner of, uh, Acorn. So I'll turn off to, I'll, uh, I'll turn over to Mickey. He can do a quick introduction and then I'm assuming he's going to turn over to David. He can give you a little more information on what we're doing. So, so Mickey, I'll, I'll give it over to you.
Thank you, Scott. Uh, yes, Mickey McGuire and CEO of Acorn Technology. And, um, you know, we have been working with Gina Noelani and the rest of the team there, uh, to implement a, a variety of, uh, additional security measures, uh, of since the last, uh, quarter to six months. And, um, continue, plan, continue to make more improvements as we go forward. Uh, I have on the call today, David McKissick. He is our Director of Security Services. And, uh, David is, uh, uh, dealing with, uh, some childcare ad, uh, matters, but he is on, connected right now, just muted. Um, and I can handle some of that discussion in the event David is still, uh, currently indisposed. And since he's not responding, I will assume that is still the case.
Oh, excuse me. Hi, good morning. My name is David McKissick. I am the Director of Security Services, as Mickey mentioned. And, uh, I'm in charge of all things cybersecurity for our customers.
That is correct. That's correct. David and his team has done a wonderful job with, uh, uh, some of the, uh, improvements, uh, that, uh, we've implemented for the Costa Mesa Sanitary District. At a high level, I think that, uh, there's some items that Gina Noelani wanted to touch on. Um, one is, uh, implementing greater levels of security for remote access for employees. Obviously during the time of COVID, people working remotely, that is still continued to be often on the case. That creates a, an, an attack vector for, uh, put potentially malicious activity. So we've set up, uh, it's called the virtual private networks, uh, which requires that connection to be encrypted. It also requires the, uh, use of multi-factor authentication. So not just a username and password, but additional, um, forms of authentication to ensure, uh, that that connection cannot be mimicked by somebody else and attacker on the outside. Uh, additionally, we have garnered, uh, off additional offsite storage for backups. So, um, while we can do everything we can to be preventative, as, uh, Scott mentioned, even if the second largest school district in the country is, can be compromised and other government agencies can be compromised, there's nothing that's a hundred percent. So one of the things that we've done to improve the capabilities of recovering from a potential attack is to acquire additional storage backup those, uh, uh, that data offsite and have that off the network so that in the event of a ransom where we would have a protected set of backups that we could restore from. In it, in addition to that offsite backup, we have done a, uh, conducted a vulnerability scan. David and his team, um, have, uh, scanned the Costa Mesa Sanitary District Network and all the devices attached to that. Uh, and that scan, as was able to identify, um, some, some deficiencies in a variety of areas that have been and are being remediated currently. This is a normal practice to conduct, um, everything from, you know, what, what, what's not vulnerable today may be vulnerable tomorrow. So this should be an ongoing aspect of a at least annual process to, um, identify and remediate any vulnerabilities in software, hardware, firmware, things of that nature. Um, additionally, from a capacity to be able to detect a potential attack going on, we've implemented a, what's called a, a managed detection and response system. That's an application, uh, powered by SecureWorks. And which is a leader in cybersecurity, software prevention applications. And this goes on every computer and every server. Uh, it also has a, uh, an appliance on the network that's monitoring the traffic that's taking place, uh, and activity across the network, logging that. And then those logs are then analyzed by, uh, cybersecurity analysts, uh, to be able to identify any polition, potential malicious activity. And that is then, if there's any alerts that are generated from that, we get alerted from that and then can take proper, proper steps and proper actions to investigate further and or remediate. But that is helps on the detection side. Yes, sir.
Oh, Mickey, uh, the, does, does that need to be extended to say, um, the, the remote computers?
Uh, so if they are computers that are under our purview of management and, and support, then they are on those remote computers as well.
Okay, so, thank you.
No problem. It is not, it is not, uh, um, systems that are only physically there at the, um, at the office or at the location like the, the yard. This is any computer that we support, no matter where it is physically located at that time.
Thank you.
Certainly. So, and, you know, while in addition to, there's the detection side of the, uh, the, uh, prevention there, but there's, uh, there's the detection side, sorry. There's also prevention. So we've implemented a cybersecurity awareness training, um, program called NO Before. Um, and this is a solution that helps train the staff on how to, um, identify potential, um, emails that are malicious, um, as well as help them on basic, I'll call it cybersecurity hygiene. Making sure that you have proper passwords in place, making sure to use multi-factor authentication whenever that's available. Um, but as well as physical security aspects, you know, just because someone's following you into a building doesn't mean you should let them in. Um, those kinds of fundamental, uh, cybersecurity training is included in that program. Uh, that's on a recurring training basis. And in addition to that, there is testing aspects that go along with it in terms of, um, sending, testing phishing emails so that we can monitor the staff's progress in their ability to, uh, learn from the training and help them continue to be able to identify and not click on malicious links or, um, attachments that may be malicious. So we help, uh, include that aspect in the true prevention for the staff to learn from. Uh, in addition, we've got some upcoming projects, um, over the next, throughout this fiscal year and next from things like moving to the email to Microsoft Office 365 that will add greater levels of protection so we can implement multi-factor authentication for email, uh, which will then allow for, you know, to prevent, uh, having a, uh, what's called a, a, uh, business email compromise. Um, that prevents attackers from being able to log in as someone else's email, once we can do that. Uh, in addition, there are continual training efforts like with the NO Before, continual efforts like with the Managed Detection Response Program and continued efforts with the vulnerability scan. So I think those are the areas that, um, Gina had asked us to cover and touch on. Are there, are there anything I think I've missed uh, from Noelani or Scott there, or any, any questions that would be, uh, pertinent that you'd like me to address?
Do any of the board members have questions?
Mr. President, this is, uh, Brett. I do.
Hi, Brett.
Good morning. Uh, thank you, Mickey. Just a couple of questions and, uh, you know, if you can't go into specifics, I understand, but, um, with regards to our redundancy, can you maybe walk me through that, um, jet overall redundancy?
Well, uh, I, I guess in terms of, uh, yeah, specific terms of redundant, what areas of redundancy you'd like me to touch on?
Uh, I mean, okay, network down and, and, you know, obviously not location of remote uh, servers, things like that, but just kind of just the broad, uh, network map, I guess, would be best.
Uh, well, the, you know, uh, office is that primary location where, uh, key forms of, um, internet and infrastructure are located. Um, there are, um, backups that take place to other locations that have their own separate internet connection there that is not dependent upon the, the main office. In the event of a disaster, let's say at the main office, we would be able to, um, restore, um, those backups uh, at another location and have those systems operable at that other location. Um, that, you know, depending on the nature of the disaster, um, and the, uh, ability to, uh, acquire some additional hardware for those servers, uh, the backups are there, but we would need some additional hardware. Um, that would dictate the time to restore functionality, but we can bring those up, um, critical systems up, uh, in that remote site.
Okay, great. And then, um, like our, can you talk just about our SLAs currently with downtime and things like that? In, in emergency or otherwise, or a, or a, you know, denial of service attack or something like that, that, do we have SLAs?
Uh, so there are SLAs in terms of like internet connections. Um, I'd have to verify that. I don't have that, uh, you know, memorized in my head in terms of what the ISP provides. Um, because there are two separate interconnect, internet connections with two separate IP addresses. You know, in the event of a DOS attack, a denial of service attack, you know, one, we can work with the ISPs, uh, to help prevent that, um, uh, to shun those attacks. Um, there are also multiple IP addresses that we could move over to systems over to that would help us, you know, it depending on what, how broad and range the attack is, is, is impacting. We dictate whether we can get systems up and operational on an alternative IP. Um, but we would be dependent upon the ISP at that point to, from a of complete blocking of a DOS attack. Uh, nothing within the CMSDs or Acorns control to prevent that. In the event that it was a prolonged attack that the ISP could not, um, defend it or block against, which is unlikely, um, we could then revert to the, um, you know, more of the DR plan to bring systems up in an alternative site.
Got it. Okay. Thank you very much.
Certainly.
Uh, do any of the other directors have questions?
Uh, this Mike, I just have a comment for staff.
Go ahead.
Um, Scott. Because SDRMA carries the cybersecurity coverage under our, our, uh, premise liability and things. Have they asked for, and I probably should know this, huh? But have they asked for any kind of report on what we're doing for cybersecurity?
I don't recall they have, no, but I know that's been a big topic or a big subject with SDRMA, but no.
Okay. I'll, I'll, I'm at a conference with them this week, so let me, let me check and I'll get back to it. I, I think it's important for any risk carrier, um, to know what their client is doing in terms of preventing this. It may offer some discounts on the, the programs and things, but I'll, uh, since I brought it up, Scott, let me do a follow-up and I'll, I'll get back to you on that.
May I, may I comment on that, sir?
Yeah.
Sure. Go ahead.
Uh, from my experience, most cybersecurity insurance providers will have a, um, a questionnaire that needs to be answered. And typically David would work with, I think Gina probably in this case to address, uh, the, answer those questions. And the answers to those questions typically will impact whether or not the, uh, the carrier will, you know, issue or not issue of cybersecurity insurance and, uh, what the risk premiums, um, they charge for that.
Yeah, I, you, you nailed, you nailed it. Um, I know that through SDRMA, I'm on the Board of Directors of SDRMA. I know that on our, on an annual basis, we send out a questionnaire on the whole range of risk management topics. I, I just wasn't sure if that include, how much, uh, cybersecurity that included. So, um, I know we ask about it, but I'm not sure to what extent.
That's fair. Um, I've seen them very, you know, we, we've got a customer base that's very broad and, uh, we've seen some that are very, um, shortened and not, not at the surface level, I'll say, and some that are, you know, seven or eight pages of very in-depth questions that they go through. It really depends on the, on the carrier.
Well, yet, yet I know that the carriers are really pushing for this seven, eight, 10-page questionnaire and the middle people and the clients. That's a lot of work and that, uh, isn't always necessary. So I, I appreciate you saying that.
Certainly, certainly. And look, I think that just to comment on that, um, the, you're right, insurance carriers are getting much more stringent, um, in the risks they're willing to accept. Uh, I think the whole industry underpriced or undervalued or undermeasured their risk. Um, and you're seeing that now in significantly increased in premiums and requirements to attain coverage. So for example, you heard me mention that Office 365 migration, so we can implement, uh, MFA on email. That's extremely important because, uh, more and more carriers are unwilling to, uh, issue insurance until MFA is in place for email. So that's definitely one of our, um, efforts for this fiscal year. It's on the roadmap.
But I, I appreciate you doing your homework because you're absolutely right. Carriers underpriced this, didn't give it a lot of concern. And now all of a sudden with the losses they're seeing, they're making availability extremely difficult. So thank you for, uh, for, I, I really appreciate, uh, your attention to that.
You're welcome, sir.
Any other directors have questions? Um, Mickey, um, you know, the, the school district cyber attack, uh, was discussed, uh, have, well, I'm, I'm, I'm sure there were a lot of lessons learned from, uh, from that. Um, is, is that the case?
Well, I, I mean, it's, it's very public, very well notarized attack, um, right at the moment, the, you know, we, we were receiving notifications as early as the Monday of Labor Day, uh, from, you know, CISA Homeland Security, uh, alerting to the, uh, attack that's taking place. Um, they come out with, um, the, the standard, I'll say typical, um, list of things that organizations, uh, should be doing. And, uh, to be preventative and to be looking out, monitoring for these types of, uh, attacks that occurred. I'm unaware of that they've released the exact, uh, details of the attack vector that was exposed and how well or how that was compromised. Uh, David may know that. I am not aware of the exact aspects of that. But, uh, you know, the, the, there are the, I'll say the, the, the eight to 10 things that they're, they constantly reinforce that need to be done. And we're working to help get, um, the, the district to, to those levels, things like MFA for email is one of them that we need to accomplish. But the things that I mentioned earlier were some of those key things we needed to do to help get, uh, the, improve the security posture of the district. Uh, and that's what we've been working on the last, um, I'll say six months to get some of these things implemented. And Scott, Noelani and Gina have been great about, um, being supportive of making those changes.
Um, and do any of the other directors have questions? Um, and do we have any public with their hands raised? Um, if not, Scott, um, you know, uh, do we, do we have an adequate budget, uh, to implement the, um, necessary improvements?
Yes, I believe, yes, we're, we're, we are fine with our budget, uh, with, with improvements. Yes.
Uh, well, I, my, my question was, do we have, do we have a, uh, the proper amount in the budget to do this? Like, yeah, maybe you, maybe you answered that question, but I didn't quite hear it. Okay.
Yes, people.
Mr. President, can I ask a question?
Sure. Alan?
Alan Burns. Hi. To our, uh, IT, uh, expert, uh, Acorn, uh, CEO. I'm seeing that, uh, the insurance policies are more and more covering extortion demands. And it's like, are we, is this becoming a course of commerce now that they, they, these rates are being set for what's being paid and, um, do they, has there been any study of what the demand is going to be when you get one of these extortion demands? Cause I mean, it's, it's just amazing to me that, uh, an insurance policy actually would cover this now.
Um, well, that has, uh, the great questions are the, uh, yes, it is becoming a business model. It is not becoming, it is a business model. It's a multi-billion dollar business model, um, that is, um, you know, unfortunately just a new form of criminal enterprise. And, um, yes, that, that extortion is common. It has been going on for, uh, many years actually now. Um, and, you know, it is, uh, as I said, it's unfortunately commonplace. From a price tag point, I've seen very low in terms of a few thousand dollars to hundreds of thousands of dollars. Um, that I've seen, there are cases where it's millions. I'm sure you've heard of cities in the recent past. Atlanta, Baltimore, things of that nature. And that, uh, you know, when you look and compare the cost of recovery compared to the cost of the ransom, uh, oftentimes recovery is more expensive. And so, and from, if the insurance policy was, you know, accurately, all the questions were accurately answered and they took all the, the, the entity took all the proper precautions, um, and the policy covered it, then those policies are paying out on it. But I have to say, I have seen, um, where, um, we've gone into clients that had all, where we've been asked to come in and help recover. And their, and they did not answer all their questions properly and their insurance policy did not cover it. They denied the claim. So, you know, it's very important that those questions get answered. But, um, hopefully to your, to answer your question, yes, it is a business enterprise. Yes, that rate, rate is going up. How they determine it, I don't know. Uh, they probably based upon the entity's capability of paying versus the cost associated to recovery. But, uh, yeah, I think that one of the, um, as I'm thinking about it, one of the other things that I think we should be, well, we want to talk to Noelani and Scott and Gina about is, you know, the, what's called data loss prevention and helping to reduce exfiltrating and releasing sensitive information because that is the other side of the coin that the extortionists, um, they, they, they pursue. So they say, yes, they've encrypted everything and they've got a copy of your data. And so if you don't pay and you're going to go through, because you've got proper methods to restore, um, they'll say, well, we're going to release your sensitive information to the public. And so that's the other form of extortion that is used besides just, we're not going to give you your encryption key, uh, to decrypt your data.
Is Bitcoin still a medium of exchange?
Yes, it is.
Thank you.
Because of the difficulty in tracking it. However, after there was a recent extortion that the, uh, FBI was able to at least catch and pull back some of the funds that were issued through Bitcoin. They were able to track it and restore some of those funds, only about 25%. Um, but I think it was four million dollar-ish ransom.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. President.
Do any of the directors have any further questions?
Mr. President, I've got one final one. If that's all right.
Sure. Director Echols.
And this actually may be more of a staff question, but, um, obviously with, and Mickey, you touched on remote usage, you know, that, that's where a lot of vulnerabilities can occur. And with, uh, obviously a lot more remote access in the past several years, do we have a written policy for all of our, um, employees and remote access and things like that, that we written and we're following? Scott, do you know?
Well, it's not necessarily a policy, but it's an agreement that you have to sign.
Okay.
And they have to follow instructions in those agreements.
Okay.
So it's kind of like a policy, but it's not a formal policy.
Okay. Um, just something we might want to look at. I just, I've saw something on that recently and to protect everyone's interest and of course our network, but you know, just might be something to dust off. All right. Thank you.
And, and on that note, sir, that I have found that on, uh, the cybersecurity insurance questionnaires, that is becoming a more common question about policies. Um, written policies and procedures related to everything from passwords to remote access to use of your laptop, um, your devices, uh, those kinds of things. And there's a myriad of those. And so that is definitely an area and, and, um, Scott, if that's something you'd like Acorn to assist with, we can do so.
Thank you, Mickey.
Well, in, in that regard, to Director Echols' question, um, uh, Scott, would you, uh, is it, um, I think I need to be briefed on what that agreement for the role mode access is and probably other directors might. Is, is that, is that available or how do we access that, that agreement?
Yes, Mr. President, I can get you a copy of the agreement that, that staff signs.
I may have seen it and not understood or not read it, but um, all, all the directors and, and I'm sure you've educated staff, but, uh, um, I for one probably need to be briefed on that. Any other questions for, uh, for, for Mickey? On this topic? If not, thank you very much, Mickey. You know, I, I feel much more comfortable, you know, hearing, hearing, hearing from you. Um, this is obviously an, an ongoing need for agencies to stay on top of. So I, I appreciate your broad knowledge on this topic.
You're definitely welcome, sir. I'm happy to help and report on it. Um, it is an ever-evolving and, uh, challenging landscape in this regard. And, um, it's, uh, we continue to do our best to help keep the district, uh, protected. So.
So if there are no further questions, uh, thank you very much for your report. And we can move on to the next topic.
Thank you. Then we will depart unless there's any need for us to continue to stay on.
Thank you, Mickey.
God, is, Scott, is there any need?
No, no. Thank you, Mickey. Thank you for, very much for, for your participation.
Happy to help. Thank you. Have, I hope everyone has a great day.
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you, guys. We'll move on to item number two, receiving file, the 2022 Code Enforcement Officer's Report.
Good morning, President Newton, members of the board. I'm sorry. This, this report summarizes major points for three ordinance enforcement topics covering scavenging, graffiti and trash container enforcement. For the month of August, the CMSD interim code enforcement officer focused his efforts on patrols in various parts of the community. The goal is to identify and deter instances of scavenging and residential trash carts left within the public view. In the month of August, the district saw a number of complaints filed with the CMSD interim code enforcement staff regarding scavenging activity in the city. As with most scavenging complaints, the alleged violations take place in the early morning hours. In order to, to address resident concern, the interim code enforcement officer is patrolling the streets by 6:30 AM. Included below are instances of scavenging that were detected while the officer when, is, was investigating specific complaints. Uh, the month of August, I caught one scavenger on Wilson Street. Uh, an adult female I've never encountered before. Uh, any questions on scavenging activity?
Mr. President?
Go ahead, Director Echols.
Yeah, thank you. Uh, just, it's actually good news, I think, but it says numerous complaints, but only one essentially cited or, or talked to. And most months we have at least four, five, six and above on just a slow month in August, too hot out there, I guess, maybe, or?
It, it's a possibility. And then as I was doing, uh, another project, uh, in the month of August, I was doing the, uh, And then, as I was doing another project in the month of August, I was doing the the manhole recording project. So a couple of weeks was mainly doing the recording to get that knocked out.
Got it. Okay, thank you.
In the month of August, there were a few customer complaints reported to the district headquarters regarding trash carts in public view. The following is a list of locations where trash cart violations were found and addressed by the courtesy notice process. Forty-eight, I mean, I'm sorry, forty-six total violation notices at different very locations within the city listed by the street names and the amount of carts on that street. No cases of graffiti in the month of August. And the final page of the scavenging report will show that it was a Wednesday trash day that I caught her basically just east of Newport Boulevard on Wilson Street. That'll conclude my report for the month of August. Any further questions on that?
Do any of the directors have questions? If if not, I have a few, David. Do you have any guesstimate of the carts in public view? Is that a common violation? And do you have any? You're listing warnings for, I think, carts on the street, carts in front of the garage and carts, you know, somewhere in between. Do you do you record the breakdown of what those particular warnings that you issue are?
I do. If if it's a repeat offender, I'll open a case and be able to track it that way within the system. And then that will give me future reference to say, this has been an ongoing problem. I've I've got, you know, fifteen violation notices at this particular address. And then maybe we would reach out to the owner at that point and try and get some compliance.
Okay. So it's basically, when when you do reach out to them, you you tell them what the violation is on the violation notice, I guess. Do you have any general percentage of when you're when you when you observe violations for carts in view?
A percentage of how many are in view?
Yes, yes, yes.
It varies from from day to day. A week like last week was a holiday on Monday, so the trash day was late, you know, by one day in most areas. So I I wasn't really able to hand out a lot of violation notices when those things kind of occur because of the simple fact of, you know, when I'm out in the field, you know, missed days from from CRNR and then, you know, make up runs.
Okay, well, you know, other than a holiday week, do you have any general idea? Well, in the future, I'd like like some sort of discussion or maybe you you issue warnings based on, you know, certain types of carts, where they're located. Anyway, in the future, we can talk about some some more of that. Not a holiday, not a holiday week or month. Anyway, thank you. Any other directors have any questions? If not, we'll move on to the receiver. Thank you, David, very much for your report. The receiving receiving file legislative report. And Gina, are you going to give an overview of this or? Scott?
Mr. President, I'm sorry, Gina's currently at a conference this week, so she provided this report for your review. And we'll be happy to answer any questions at a later time.
Okay, well, there was several items on 1383. Either federal, well, I guess not federal, but certain items explaining 1383 legislation. So I I I would appreciate some expansion of that data as it relates to the district, you know, in a future report.
Sure.
Mr. President?
Director Eccles.
Yeah, so can we just continue this item to our next board, regular board meeting?
Oh, that that that's a very good idea. Gina, Noelani is, will Gina be back from the conference by then?
Yes, she will.
Okay, because there were, I thought, some important some important legislative items that the 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 board needs to be, at least maybe I need to be, you know, need to be explained in in more detail. But I appreciate Gina has a very extensive report and I I is that okay with the board to extend this to the the board meeting? Thank you for that comment, Director Eccles. So we'll go on then to the item number four, which is the missed trash pickup report.
Thank you, Mr. President. Noel is going to pull up the attachments where I can see it. So as you see, you can minimize the There you go. Thank you. So you see this is the monthly reports on missed trash pickups. As as you can see, in the month of August, it did increase substantially, almost doubled from July. And it basically almost basically tripled from a year before. The significant cause again is is, you know, drivers' absence or truck breakdowns. Those are, we believe, are significant reasons why the we're seeing missed missed pickups. CRNR is communicating with us when they believe there is going to be delays. We appreciate that. We get that on social media. But, you know, we're continuing monitoring the situation. I know this this month, or I'm sorry, last week, there was, and it's not not indicating this report because it's it's for September, but last week there were some delays because there was just too much trash, and they couldn't pick it all up. And so they had to push it back a day. So have you interesting questions you may have?
Mr. President?
Director Eccles.
Great, thank you. So I went back and looked at some of these reports where, you know, past couple of years since we've been tracking this, but it's not getting better. And in most cases, it's getting worse from COVID even. Is that, am I correct in that for the most part?
Virus are being affected by COVID, yes.
But I mean, during COVID, the numbers were even better than some of our numbers now, it seems like. So I I can't keep going back and blaming COVID. I mean, in the heart of COVID, the numbers were better than they are today. So I'm just all right. Then the the other thing is I'm getting complaints from residents saying, yeah, it's great. Our trashing had picked up, but we're being notified but a day or two later, which, of course, does no good. I mean, what are we do? What's the? I'm get trying to get the plan here. I gotta see some improvement somehow.
You know, I I the best I could do, I mean, I can have CRNR come back with you what what address. But we've had CRNR talk, you know, talk to you about this, and and they've given plans or given you know, their 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 strategy of what they're doing, but we're just not seeing any improvements. And but again, to to not defend, I mean, that's again, for CRNR's defense, it's not just CRNR. Everyone's experienced the same thing, so you can't just blame it all on CRNR. Everyone's having the same issues. And it's not just Costa Mesa. I in my community in Orange, where I I'm getting missed pickups too. Right. It's not just us, you know, there's not just picking on Costa Mesa. It's it's a statewide problem.
Oh, and I I agree with that statement 100%. It's across the board, but at the end of the day, just like in all of our businesses, we're accountable. Sure. We need to come up with a correction plan and action plan, something that's not just words that we can then in turn talk to the community and say, you know what? Here's what we're all doing to make it better. And I don't know what that is, but I I would suggest some sort of study group, some sort of I know that there's been contract negotiations, but some sort of talk about, let's get an action plan. It's just saying and continuing to blame things on COVID is just getting old. And I don't know, we just got to get it better, so I don't know how that.
I mean, I mean, the answer, the action plan is pretty simple. They need to hire more people, and then they get new trucks on the road. But unfortunately, there's constraints in those issues. They can't find, they can't keep drivers. They can't find people that want to work on customer services, so their hands are tied too. So it it it's a simple fix, really, if you think about it. More staff, newer trucks. Trucks are being delayed because supplies are on back order, right? It's not CRNR's fault for that, right? They're they're out heavily recruiting drivers. They're heavily out recruiting customer service reps. But either they find the drivers and they can't keep them because maybe this this is not for them. Because, you know, they're finding, you know, they're finding class A drivers. They're not technically trash drivers, but they're class A drivers, and they're training them. And they say, no, this is not in, this is not for me. So they 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 leave. Other companies are poaching other companies, drive trash drivers, because it's fill the need. That's that's going on a lot. So I think there is a plan. It's just unfortunately, there are just some constraints that it's just uncontrollable.
Well, but
That's fine, but what's our recourse? In every other business, there's liquidated damages. There's all sorts of things.
We and we've been negotiating with that. That's one of the things that the always ad hoc committee is going to be discussing this month are the liquidated damages that we're going to in place. So we we have that negotiated with CRNR. So once we have an agreement, we'll have liquidated damages.
Okay, I mean, we've got to have some sort of enforcement. To have a plan and not be able to achieve your plan, it's why have the plan?
It's useless. And that's what and that's what the board did a couple of years ago. They didn't approve the CPI increase, you know, you you know, based on their performance. Well, of course, the board wasn't pleased with the performance, so therefore, when they came with a 5.6, 5.8% CPI increase, the board said, no.
But we just did.
The majority just 2.8. And again, that wasn't, that wasn't, again, wasn't really related to to performance. It was related to inflation, which we're seeing, you know, 8% inflation.
Well, I I think Director Eccles is correct. The part of the action plan is why, what is CRNR doing to be able to hire more people?
Well, again, I again, to answer that question, I can have CRNR do that, but I think they're doing everything possible they can do. They they are, they're going to job fairs, they are, they're going to schools, they are, they're advertising. You know, they're doing everything they need that to hire these people.
Well, but they're not being effective, so the 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 plan elements aren't they are not achieving their plan elements.
Again, and and I I can't speak for CRNR, we can have CRNR speak for that, but I again, I don't think it's all their response. It's it's all their fault or because it is an industry standard or industry concern that all of them can't can't find enough drivers and or retain drivers. Or they can't, you know, the the customer service center, they, I think they said they needed 30 employees, I think it was, or I think there were something, or down like 14 employees. They needed 14 employees.
Wow.
That's a very difficult position that to retain is customer service because they are constantly getting bombarded with complaints, and it is extremely difficult to retain those type of people.
Well, Mr. President, one follow up, I mean, here's one thing. I'm not a resident, I should get a rebate for multiple missed pickups. There's a there's a way to solve it. I I'm in construction. I can't hire construction workers, no kids are coming into trade. Still doesn't alleviate my responsibility to figure out how to do the jobs. And if I don't, I get hit with a penalty, so why can't we issue a penalty then? And rebate our customers?
We we can, and again, that's liquidated damage. Now, we can bring that back to the board and discuss about liquidated damages. And and we could, if we want to implement that sooner, we can have that discussion with CRNR. The bottom line is, yes, the the trash is is being missed, but it's still being picked up. It's still being collected.
Well, on a separate item, Scott, is are there any? You know, there's got to be a lot of studies on the the missed missed trash pickup. Is there an industry standard that we can point to that CRNR is doing better or doing worse than the industry standard? There's got to be these kinds of studies industry wide or locally, hopefully locally, Orange County wide. There's there's probably six, eight, nine, 10 trash vendors picking trash up. Is is any, who's studying? You know, what 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 would be the stand, what what is occurring in other communities? I I know you, you can see it in orange, but what is it in Santa Ana and, you know, the other 25 jurisdictions that that we can point to that say CRNR is actually doing better or and or doing worse?
Mr. President, I have Mike. Mike is is going to speak.
Oh, yeah, I see Mike. Mike, welcome. Thank you.
Yeah, I I wish I had news of any type of detailed report, but I'm not aware of any. Typically, when we do performance reviews, there are and 20s, 30s are typical on missed pickups. Again, the challenge with that in in a lot of the instances I've done studies with is, you know, hey, I didn't get my thing out on time. I'm going to call and say I did a missed pickup. That's clearly not happening here, but that's part of the reason there's not a lot of reliable data on it. With new carts, new programs, and a general challenge in in getting workers, it is something that I'm hearing from all my cities that's a ongoing problem. So it's it's not an easy solution. Unfortunately, there's there's not any studies that I'm aware of. It's more just empirical evidence or feeling they're getting more calls, but nobody's really broken it down. But there are always mixed missed pickups. There's never a perfect collector out there. And again, you're a little bit on the high side, but there's no no perfect entity out there.
Well, Mike also, you know, there's other service industries, you know, like Southern California Edison, our internet provider. You know, even Mesa, you know, the water industry, they're all experiencing, they all experience some some sort of dislocation in in their service. I I guess I'm asking the same kind of question. You know, I calculated what CRNR, I can I can calculate what CRNR's percent missed trash pickups mean, even though the data is, you know, not totally. We have data, whether it's any good or not, or whether it's correct or not, is another question. But, you know, so when I calculate the population and or the residences, we have 22,000, 22,000 plus residences. And the and the reported data that we're using, it's about a half of half of 1%. So it's not a large amount. I can tell you when Edison shuts me off or my Verizon service shuts me off, you know, it it is, they it can be much worse than a missed trash pickup. But I I don't know if there's any data on in on those kinds of industry wide things. I'm beginning to try to collect data when I see, when I have SCE shut off, then I know it's X number of residents shut off in, you know, a certain certain size area. But do you do you have any any idea about those kinds of service industries? I know that's not what you're focused on, but.
No, I don't. The the one thing that I would be interested in knowing is the containers per stop in the district, because I know that you have for resident convenience, given a lot of containers. I know that historically, when I did the performance review, the the weights per vehicles were a little bit high. And there are certain parts of your collection area that are considered more difficult than the standard 60 by 100 in residential, roll it out to the curb collection area, you have a lot of interspersed multifamily deep lots with a lot of containers. So there there are some unique factors. But again, I think if you looked at containers per customer to see if that's potentially an issue, and and if you do need to to reroute. Again, I know the haulers are always using technology to try to improve route efficiency. But again, I don't know if you guys have looked at containers per stop. And if the district is a bit higher, that would just exacerbate those.
Yeah. Well, you know, I I walk the neighborhoods a lot and I see certain residences have uh, you know, three, four. Ninety-five gallon containers. So my suspicion is they're using the our CRNR to. For some sort of business that they have, uh, that that residence can't produce that amount of waste generally. That's not the average. It's not the norm, but and I think that's something you're sort of speaking to, but. Yeah, and it director, any other directors have input on this?
Mr. President, could I offer a comment? Alan Burns. You you have all leverage in the world right now because you're negotiating a new contract. And you have other protections in your agreement that you have, but I mean, the greatest leverage of all is they're going to have a new contract and. Assume they want the contract. So you have more leverage than you could ever possibly want. Uh, the issue is, of course, they can get more drivers if they pay more money. You know, is it going to be thirty dollars an hour, thirty-five dollars an hour? And then are the other companies going to have to pay thirty-five dollars an hour? And guess what? All the rate payers' rates become much higher than they used to be, and that becomes the new standard. So that's the dilemma you have. But it's not that you don't have leverage. It's going to be finding the balance.
Yeah, and I think, I think Scott addressed the fact that we we are going to. Um, or we we have negotiated and I think CRNR has agreed to. The district being reimbursed for missed. For for so, for 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 some of the things that Director Echols was questioning. Anyway, um, yeah, a lot, lots of things going on with the trash industry. Uh, legislatively, you know, and uh, locally with our, our and other vendors. So if there are no further questions by the directors, uh, I think we'll go on to item number five.
This item was this um, was directed to staff to bring back for discussion as we shared with uh, the board recently. That uh, during our negotiations with CRNR, there is discussion about uh, postponing uh, the three card system. As you know, we're, we're in a two card system, uh, and we've been negotiating with CRNR to go to the three card system. Because uh, as part of SB thirteen eighty-three, uh, cardboard and paper is considered organics. And so the thinking was if we go to a source separating system, uh, we can get more value, um, more diversion. Out of uh, cardboard and paper because it'd be less contaminated. So that was the, that was the the route we were going. And and so we've been negotiating for the past year with with CRNR um, on finalizing the contract. Um, and then the discussion came up, well, what happens if, what what do we just postpone the three card system until? Um, a January twenty twenty-five. Uh, right now, we're currently in compliance with SB thirteen eighty-three. Uh, you know, we are diverting that fifty percent. Um, so the question is, uh, could we, should we? Uh, wait till January twenty twenty, January uh, twenty twenty-five. And in your staff report, I did indicate there are some, some benefits. I think it's possibility that that if we do um, wait a couple of years, uh, those benefits could. Could be, you know, at by twenty twenty-five, uh, SB thirteen eighty-three would have been implemented by three years. Uh, where it's possible that the calorie cycle, this uh, the the agency that regulates SB thirteen eighty, they could see that, you know what? Seventy-five percent might not be a realistic goal because of all the challenges cities are facing to meet that, that demand. They might uh, amend some of the regulations or maybe uh, uh, amend some of the requirements. Uh, that uh, they're, they're, they're putting on, on, on uh, organizations. Also, uh, possibility, maybe we could stick to this two card system if we find a high diversion facility. Um, I know Mike Bay has been looking around and see there is a high, high diversion facility and maybe we can, if there is, maybe we can possibly negotiate with, with that. That that company. Also, another benefit is definitely the educate. I mean, that's going to be the key to the success. Educate, educate, educate. And there's nothing wrong. Have more, more time to educate the public. So that gives us more time to to educate the public is another benefit. Um, also, uh, if we keep our rates, um, um, the way they are now, you know, we do have another rate increase. Coming up next year as it was previous to the five-year plan. Um, but we keep that rate as it is in the five-year plan. And come twenty twenty-four, uh, we see where all the other cities, organizations are in their rates. Uh, then when we do a rate increase, if we are going to the three card system or if there, we have to increase in, let's say, twenty twenty-five. Uh, that rate increase could be competitive with all the other uh, agencies because their rates are solely increasing to comply with SB thirteen eighty-three. So those are some areas I think we could uh, be beneficial if we delay. Uh, we don't necessarily have to. Um, I I know we just talked about, you know, um, the um, liquidated damages. Maybe we can go back to CRNR. And at least implement that part of the contract if they're open to liquidated damages sooner. But uh, those are some of the options and today we're here to have that that discussion. Is that something you want to consider? Continue um, still um, looking at implementing the program uh, three card system in twenty twenty-five? Or do you want to stay the course and 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 implement in twenty twenty-three? What's, what's your pleasure? And I mean, that's the purpose we're having this meeting to have that discussion.
Which of the directors wants to go first?
I will. I think waiting is to our advantage. Just because I think changes may be made because of all the criticism that I'm reading about the program itself. You know, so I think it's to our advantage to wait. Plus, we're going to be raising rates in what, twenty twenty-four?
Well, not, yeah, I mean, yes, uh.
That'll give us a good idea. So I think waiting is our, our best alternative.
Mr. President.
Director Echols?
The uh, question, so uh, if, and I tend to agree with Director Perry. Uh, if we put this off, what, can you explain what are we renegotiating our existing contract then without this three car change?
What would the uh, negotiate is is the the start date of the program? When, when with the, when, when, when are we going to um? I guess the contract is. If, I guess what we need to find out, if if we're, if we're going to go to three card system. Uh, and again, we won't know that really until more years, um, until we see where where the state regulator is going to go with the program. But we negotiate when we start the program. Are we, we're going to roll out the three card programs in uh, July twenty twenty-three? Or we're going to roll them out in January twenty twenty-five?
So I guess my question is, we, you've been all negotiating for the past several months, six months, whatever it's been. But taking this off the table or taking this delaying it to twenty twenty-five or even twenty twenty-four, whatever the case is. What's left to renegotiate on the existing contract? Anything?
Yes, we were also renegotiating all the other SB thirteen eighty-three gaps that we don't currently have in our contract. So that would be route reviews, depending on the card system that you have, SB thirteen eighty-three or our recycle is um, requesting that you review every route per year. To monitor for contamination. Obviously, um, we don't have a lot of staff. I am the only solid waste person in the agency. So we were putting the majority of the burden on CRNR. So they would do the lid flipping. They would do the route reviews. They would do the notices. They would be doing everything and then staff would just, again, just be the overhead and administrator that these things are being um, conducted. Uh, in these SB thirteen eighty-three gaps, we also renegotiated the um. Liquidated damages. We don't currently have them in our contract. And again, because of the increase in missed pickups and missed. Trish, uh, Christmas tree pickups, large items, it was just something to hold them accountable to. Like, uh, am I missing any other big portion that we may have touched on?
Uh, basically, you have to jump through that hoop of contamination monitoring and noticing the big piece. The only concern I have, and I may be the, the voice in the wilderness, but um. The facility, the high diversion rate facility requirement is only fifty percent diversion until twenty twenty-five. Historically, based on our reviews, CRNR has hit that metric at their Stanton facility. My only concern is will the state come in at some point in time and say? You have to do all these additional sorts and these additional costs of doing business to qualify. As a high diversion rate facility. Um, that's the thing that I think we need to answer. Um, on this program, because I think staying with the two cart. Is a hundred percent better for the residents. I think it's a hundred percent better for the environment. What I don't know is with a hundred percent certainty. If the state will allow that for that whole period without some systemic changes as far as the amount of dumping sorts. That CRNR has to do to prove that they're diverting that fifty percent of the organic waste content. Or materials going through the facility.
But I guess I would be dead broke if I bet on assuming what the state may or may not do in the future. It, we have no idea. And so I agree. It's like, but how are we going to predict that? I, you know, they they do one thing today and ten other things tomorrow. God knows, you know?
So again, the the district's responsibility is to direct or have a service provider that will take the materials where it can be properly diverted. So again, historically, you've, you've done that. Historically, you've been in compliance earlier than virtually every jurisdiction in the county. Um, that would be the only challenge I would see, but. As long as you can stay with that two cart program, um, I think it's going to be convenient. The challenge of rolling out a third and separate collection program is always going to exacerbate missed pickups and things like that. So you you do have some challenges in that regard as well as space. Um, you know, a lot of containers on the street. Now you add another program, you're going to have to take back and contamination. So it's definitely the way to go if the state will approve that over time and over the next.
But just to confirm last question and uh, but we are in thirteen eighty-three compliance today as we know it, correct? Okay, all right, thank you.
Um, you know, I um. I I I I don't really like the thought of delaying the three cart, potential three cart rollout system. Until the the time when um, you know, the program is supposed to be implemented. Uh, I I think we need to shoot for an earlier rollout of the three cart system. You know, I I'm not sure I'm correct. Uh, I appreciate Mike Bay's expertise in this, but. I I sort of believe that the three cart system is inevitable and and we can't. We can't be sure that it's not. So I I would think that uh. You know, and and not waiting until the absolute deadline when, you know, when we're supposed to have rolled out. Or supposed to be in compliance with the seventy-five percent criteria. I I don't, I I I I do not like the thought that we wait and hope that these other things might come to fruition. I I think that we need to make the decision on the three cart system substantially before the. January or July twenty-five, whenever this, that whenever we're supposed to be as a jurisdiction. Uh, you know, to be at seventy-five percent recovery. And I don't like the thought that that we go along and say, okay, we've always been prided ourselves to be the leaders in this. In 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 this, in this process and be ahead of the curve and, you know, and and we thought we were when we rolled out the organics program. I do not like the thought that that we're going to just hope that we, we can stay at, at the fifty percent diversion. Um, I I for one would like to see, not like to see us wait until twenty twenty-five. To even, eh, eh, to even think about that program, because that's when. If 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 we don't, if these other things don't fall into place. You know, that's the date that it's supposed to be. Uh, you know, and we, 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 we did the education program for the three card, for the organics program. In a much shorter time, waiting for a year and a half. Or more, I guess, a year and a half. Anyway. I'm not in favor of hoping that we can remain with the the two card system. If there's not some, if there's not some definitive uh, movement on the state's part, and I don't believe they will. Uh, I I would like to see the three card system rolled out substantially earlier than the twenty twenty-five date. Anyway, I don't know if I've explained myself properly, but.
Bob, I have a comment. I, we're not going to wait till that date. We're going to start it earlier. We're going to have our plan like in twenty twenty-four, ready for twenty twenty-five. So I think we're going to be planned ahead, just not going to start until that date.
Well, I I would like the start date moved up. Earlier than than when the, when it's supposed to, you know, uh, when the regulations say, okay. Now we're going to start finding either the district and or the residents, uh, be- because they're not in compliance. We need a little more time than, you know, waiting, waiting till the bitter end, in in my opinion, but.
Mr. President?
Yes, sir.
I just have maybe to alleviate, you're, I mean, I don't think we're, we're saying we'll never do this, blah, blah. But maybe I might make a stab at a motion that says we're going to uh, put off the implementation of the three card system. With an annual review brought back to us by staff at with the current market conditions.
Okay, yeah, that was, and so then, and then we can begin the education in earnest. Uh, well, but but the problem is, is why would we spend time doing the three card education program? If in fact, we don't know we need it.
That's why I made, again, I, staff does a great job, I think, giving us the information on an annual basis. Just see where the government is, where the market is, what CRNR says, just an annual report. And then us as a board can look at it and go, hey, stop educating or do more educating or hey, we need to three card it next year. Whatever the case is.
Okay, yeah, Director Echols, we, so I I like that idea, but um, we're now in the middle of twenty twenty-two. So we would, un- under, under, I I think that's a very thoughtful recommendation. Under that, we would get a, a. An update in July of um, twenty twenty-three. And then in July of twenty twenty-four. So I I thi- I think that that would be appropriate. We'll understand more by then, in each of those incrementals, in 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 incremental evaluations. So as to where this, uh, we hope the state might be going to. Is is that, is that appropriate?
I think we could go a six-month review would probably be better, you know, yearly, because then you're going to get more information earlier.
Well, we might go with a yearly one.
I don't care. We have, we have a monthly study session, so if it's every six, I'm fine, whatever, you know?
Yeah, okay, well, I didn't under, you know, I can't see who's making those comments. Scott, was that your comment?
That was mine, or. That was our.
If it's a good comment, it's not mine.
We've, we're all doing very, we all need, well, I need uh. Information as soon as possible. This is very, very expansive program and.
Can I, can I make a comment?
Sure, Mike.
I'm not sure that whether it'll be good or bad, but I'm going to make a comment anyway. So. If I'm missing something, somebody tell me because. By not, w- w- we're going through, we have a conundrum here in it. We have some issues with missed pickups. Because they don't have enough resources to pick up all the trash, correct? I think it's correct. So if we institute a third cart in July of twenty twenty-three. We've just exacerbated our, our problems and their problems as far as I'm concerned. I like the idea of looking at this every six months and tying in the missed collections as part of the discussion. Because if they don't have the resources, they're not going to pick up a third or fourth or fifth, or it doesn't matter how many carts. So I think we have to, and I, and I think CRNR recognizes that. I I I, you know, I run a business too. And I'm having issues with performance at some levels. And I I think we all need to look at that. But um, it it, I agree with you, Bob. I mean, I I think we as a district have been in the forefront of a lot of issues. And I was looking forward to having this, but I also want this discussion that like Mike Bay brought up. And and Mike, if you're still there, the discussion of a third source. Um, isn't that essentially the argument between a dirty Murph and a clean Murph?
Yeah, that would be, my opinion is the way the. Yeah, that would be, my opinion is the way the state.
Oh, okay. Yeah, we can chat later. I'm at work now, but thought I'd sneak in a call. So, yeah.
And I didn't hear a word Mike said.
All right. Yeah, I think the the regulations are written to promote source separation and making it tougher for mixed waste processing to qualify as a high diversion rate facility. That's really where that comes in.
Okay.
So, yeah, I I think you're correct there. I think time is beneficial to the district in that right now, everybody is rushing to price these programs with a lack of sufficient facilities. But the market pricing hasn't matured yet. So that switch to a third container has additional costs and it has pricing metrics that I I think over time may change. There's also some innovative programs in Los Alamitos, for example, where they keep the food with the trash. Will that be able to divert seventy-five percent? Don't know, but if it does, that may be a paradigm shift in the industry. A lot of things can happen. But I I think your point to adding more contain the route is a real now. I I think if you get the missed pickup situation in order, you get an inventory of your containers finalized, I think everybody is working on that, then you could look at the mix and match and, hey, we have to transition out, transition in these new containers and whether that occurs in 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 twelve months, eighteen months, twenty-four months, or thirty months. It will probably have to happen. I think President Newton is correct. That's that's the the future. But it it if it doesn't have to be now with the other issues that you have, I I think that's the correct course.
And and back to what what I I think we've alluded to a little bit is I don't have a problem with pushing it out if it benefits our rate payers and the district. But I'm also not opposed to if we do these studies and we look at it every six months or eight months or a year, whatever we decide to do. And we, I don't want to see us stop the education program. If the education program takes us until twenty twenty-five, so be it. At least we'll be, we'll we'll clean up some things there. But I'm not opposed if we get in the middle of these reviews and it looks like we can go ahead and go early, why not? I mean, I I like that. I I like having the options. I would much rather get this thing started sooner than later. But I want to be realistic and make sure we have, like Mike just said, we have the other issues taken care of before we we jump into this. There's nothing worse than getting into a program and having it go, oops, we we screwed up. Let's fix, you know, let's back out. I want to be totally prepared. And if it takes a delay, I guess so be it.
Do any of the others? Oh, okay.
Just just to maybe put a bow on it and Vice President Schaefer, that was a great comment. So you you have confidence in your comments, but
I never doubt myself, right?
But, I mean, again, I'm just going to go back to Sacramento. Los Angeles is nowhere near figuring this thing out. And if LA is nowhere near figuring this out, the state, there's going to be a lot of changes and we just don't, they are. Sacramento is not going to allow LA massive thirteen eighty-three fines and violations. It's just not going to happen. But so I I would actually amend my original motion to agree with Director Perry with a indefinite postponement of the three cart with a twice-a-year review of the current compliance, current negotiations with CRNR, current state regulations.
Yeah.
Nature.
No, I I think I I would agree with that one hundred percent. Well, I I don't think we need a motion that basically that's just direction to staff.
Yes, that was very clear. We we have our directions. Thank you.
Okay. Is that is that is that is that all right with you, Director Echols?
Absolutely. Thank you.
Okay. So the next six months, let's let's set a timeline. So the next next review.
We'll do our next review in December. So December and Jan, December and July will be our.
Okay, okay. Is that is that is that all right with the motion makers?
Yes, it is.
Okay. Thank you all for, you know, very energetic discussion. We are, it's a very steep learning process and I and I think Director Echols, you're correct. The bigger jurisdictions will probably continue to flounder and and that may get Sacramento's eye and hopefully. If there are no further discussion, I think we can go on to the closing items, which is oral communications and directors' comments. Are there any more communications or directors' comments? If not, I think very much for everyone being, having a very engaging discussion and staff, I would only encourage you to report back to what needs you have to remain on or get on, you know, top of this discussion. Nebilia said, you know, she's basically a one-one-person operation. I I I do not know whether that's sufficient. So we do have some resources, I think, from some of the the grant money that we have discussed recently. I I don't know if if some of that grant money is already prescriptive or already had to be identified, but anyway.
But Bob, I I apologize. I I had one more thing I forgot, if you don't mind.
Well, you were under director's comment, so you can go.
Okay. But back to the cybersecurity thing that I I would ask Nolani and Gina to really give us some direction. I think, Bob, you said it earlier about being educated on on what devices you're using. And I I think our biggest, obviously, I think our biggest threat is from external devices. And there there are five of us that that don't get a lot of the training that staff gets on what we need to do with our own. Right now, I'm using a different iPad because I'm in Lake Tahoe. I forgot my district iPad. You're on a computer, I think, Bob.
Yes.
And I think some of the rest of us who are remote might be on our own PCs. So just a note to staff to to see if Acorn needs to do or staff needs to do a little more education for for those of us that are remote.
Yeah, and and even telephones. I mean, we can call in our telephone.
Right.
So, you know, you know, there's five of us and Alan and Nebilia and quite a few, quite a few remote staff that staff and or directors and and everyone. So I think you're dead on. Any other comments by directors? If not, I think very much, you know, this is a huge opportunity and necessity. Anyway, I'll adjourn the meeting unless there's any further director's comments. Thank you very much for your participation.
Hey, Nolani, are you still there? I need to have a word with Nolani. Everybody else can take off.
So sorry, Mr. President, did you officially close it?
Yes, yes. Meeting is adjourned. Thank you all.
Thanks. So Scott or Nalani, are you there?
I am here.
As you know, I'm in Lake Tahoe and I did not bring my district iPad, so I don't have access to district email.
Okay.
Just just to let you know.
Thank you very much.
Thanks.
Did say that he was not planning on attending. So as of right now, it's just the two of you.
Okay.
So what are we going to do about the study session?
What are we going to do about?
Bring it up, but.
Me, I have the same question.
Yeah.